And open the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for August 7, 2017. I'd first of all like to welcome Art Dias. He's our new commissioner here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. And this is probably the only applause you'll ever get while you're on this board, so be thankful.
That certainly is the expectation.
The first item on the agenda are the minutes. Commissioners, y'all have had the minutes.
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
Mr. Chairman, I was abstaining.
One extension from Art Emily since he was not here last month. Moving along, first item on the agenda is ZC 1707, a public hearing to consider the request of Bobby and Deborah Green to rezonate their property from R1 low-density, single-family residential district to B2 general business district.
I also need two abstentions from everybody out there.
I'm abstaining.
Thanks, Chairman. This is a rezoning, as you stated, for the Green Nurseries. It's located at 415 North Grino Road, just north of Farough Avenue, and then between Valenta Park and Farough Avenue. The current zoning of the property is R1 low-density residential district. The requested zoning is B2. As the staff report goes into a pretty good detail, I won't bore you tonight with those details, but I will kind of go over it briefly. It's in your staff report if you want to read all the information about it. The site is currently a nursery, retail nursery. They have several business licenses that are issued to them and have historically been issued to them. One is for landscape architecture, landscape retail, and also Missland's retailer. That's the current uses that are operating there with the business licenses from the city. The property is currently R1, which means it is non-conforming. It has been R1 for, I think we went back to 1961. Our, it's been residential since 1961, as best we can tell from our historic maps. The requested zoning is B2, and in your staff report you can see the list of uses that are allowed in B2. And there are also a few that are permitted by special conditions and also some that are permitted by special conditions on appeal. As we go into detail, this is a, this area's always been controversial. It's always been sort of a difficult decision when it came to zoning. There have been concerns expressed about strip development, strip commercial development, also development taking away from downtown and sort of taking businesses from there. In our staff report, we kind of go into that in some detail. We feel like that right now with the population of Farough, it can support more than just one commercial area. So I don't really believe that, in my opinion, that this would anyway degrade or take away from downtown Farough. That's a whole different shopping experience, I believe, than what you have on Grino Road. I think that's more of a, Grino Road's more of a utilitarian-type commercial use, things that you need, not, not, not an experience like downtown Farough. We have gone into the case history in your report. There have been several rezonings through the years around the property. Most of those are PUD. There have been others with site plans. There's a medical facility near this property. Also, I want to point out also that Lynnwood subdivision is located just south of Green Nurseries. That's a subdivision that was plotted in 1958, and there are 10 lots there. Of those 10 lots, only three have homes on those, and those were built in the early '60s, as best we can tell from tax records. And I guess my point with that was, is that R1 on Grino Road is probably not feasible or practical at this point in time. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to try to figure out what is the method to move forward on Grino Road when it comes to future development. Because I believe that, that at this point in time, that this is not practical for having a home, and that's obvious from the amount of development that we have there, this residential, which is very little as, as far as single-family, that again, the home's been there for many, many years, and no new development has occurred on those, on those lots in the subdivision. All that being said, we go into some detail about the conference of plan, and there are some, some language in there about creating edges and to sort of encapsulate the commercial areas. I think that to create those edges, you need to find property that may be in perpetuity in open space. I think the Auburn Extension, Extension property is one of those areas that kind of creates a natural edge of commercial development and also Valenta Park, which is owned by the city of Farough, which includes, of course, the sports fields and the rec center. Those all create, in my mind, sort of natural features, natural edges for this property and for the commercial development down Grino Road. Also, as far as the subject property itself, behind the Green Nurseries is a fairly steep gully. Also, I believe that gully sort of creates a natural barrier between a use here, a commercial use, and anything that's, that abuts that that is residential. There is a gully, so you've kind of got a physical separation there, which also creates a distance buffer as well. So, all that being said, staff do not take these decisions lightly. We know this is a departure from some of the past decisions and past discussions about Grino Road. However, I believe, we feel like it's in, that the best route to go forward is to recommend approval for this application as we go forward. There has been some discussion about overlay districts and things like that. We're open to that. We have ideas from that standpoint, how to address some of the concerns or perceived concerns that may develop, and we're certainly open to talking about those and also doing some things to help alleviate that concern with new proposed developments. But with all that being said, we recommend approval of this application. Be glad to answer any comments or questions.
Thank you, Wayne. Would anybody here like to speak on behalf of the developer? Or I should say, property owner?
Good evening, everyone. Most of you recall, we were back, we were here in January, or maybe only about half of you. There are a lot of new faces here tonight at informal hearing for what we're presenting tonight. So unfortunately, David, Holly, Lee, Ralph, I may be giving you a rerun of January here, but bear with me because even Mr. Dias here was not here in January for that. But that being said, what I wanted to do was go through a short history of where Green Nurseries has come from, what we've been through, and what we are today, and what we would like to see for the future. Our business is actually the oldest family-run business in Farough, established in 1932 by my father, who moved here from Chicago. Census records show the nursery being on North Grino Road there since at least 1940, probably earlier. If you go off to the right of the, to the right of, on the screen there, it says Robert Green, owner, operator, nursery, North Grino Road. So down through the years, the nursery, in these, some of these old photos, you can see how it progressed, rambling along from the 1930s through the '40s through the 1950s. Pretty much everything remained the same. Folks would come out to a nursery in, from the '30s to about 1960, and they'd buy a plant. You'd go out in the field, you'd dig that plant, you'd put it in a burlap sack and place it in their car, and they, and send them on their way. Well, a very major shift in garden centers and nurseries occurred about 1960, and in the lower right you can see the gentleman watering containers, which I think we might have been one of the first people to recycle in Farough. For containers, you used oil cans and tomato paste cans, but it was a sentinel, sentinel moment in the nursery trade when plants went from the field to the container. So in the 1970s, this would be a typical garden center, and we were no exception. You'd have plants laid out in blocks on black plastic. Typically, there'd be a lot of standing water and mud for folks to walk through. But by the 1960s, Green Nurseries was selling just about everything that would be under B2. We had quite, by then diversified, selling mulch, fertilizers, pesticides, florist products, pottery, glassware, et cetera. And by the late 1990s, we had made the decision to upgrade this garden center greatly, and we had built a new structure, a permanent structure among the previous greenhouses. These were all done by proper permits from the city of Farough, which I must say, at this time, we were given at least, what is it, nine, 10 building permits? 10 building permits through the years to expand what is supposedly our grandfathered business. Now, that would have been against the city's ordinances, but all during this time, from the 1960s through the 1970s, my dad came to various boards of the city requesting zoning changes from R1 or R2, the records are real unclear on that, to a business designation, and he was always rebuffed. But parallel to that time, through those, through about a 20-year period, he was handed no less than those 10 building permits to expand that grandfathered business. So in essence, but in essence, the argument we would make is that with doing so, the city of Farough has basically rezoned us to B2, and we have been such since the early 1960s. But on our own, we had upgraded the, the garden center in the 1990s to that appearance and this appearance, a mixed group of retail. There we go. Back up. We were selling everything by this time of indoor-outdoor furniture, antiques and garden tools, clothing, books, preserves, indoor-outdoor lighting, fire pits, and even garden structures. Parallel to that, we had expanded our garden design business, and it was mostly residential work. At this point, some of our works appeared in Southern Living, Better Homes and Gardens, This Old House, a few other magazines, and a couple horticulture textbooks. More recently, we're, our work has taken us more toward public gardens. We recently designed and implemented, installed the winter garden at the Mobile Botanical Gardens, which has been designated an International Garden of Excellence by the International Camellia Society. There are three others in the states with that designation. And however, as you get a little older, you know, you don't pick up the shovel quite as much. And Mark Twain once said that an expert is someone from out of town with a clipboard. And I think maybe that's, that might describe our expertise, someone from out of town. But our consultations include some of these places you may know, the Augusta National Golf Course, in Home of the Masters, Biltmore House, the Atlanta Botanical Garden, Bellinger Gardens, and in the picture, Longwood Gardens, which is in Delaware. We helped design the Camellia Collection, and they purchased the 10 to 12-foot camellias that grace it now. At the same time that the state of Alabama chose to five-lane the highway through our business on Grino Road, we were forced to acquire some more property to be able to grow the plants that we used in garden design. And so we purchased this nine-acre property on Morphe Avenue. This picture's probably about eight years old. It's completely built out now, but you'll notice at the top, we self-imposed some buffers between us and all the residences behind us, and all that's grown to maturity. On this, on this property, it's wholesale only, and in the, on the nine acres, we shipped to about 28 states and maybe about 100 local businesses and nonprofits. Incidentally, it's kind of tragically funny, but we often have to have freight shipped to this location because freight companies oftentimes, including UPS, will only ship to a business address. If they ship to a residential address, you can pay twice as much freight. So we're often having to get things shipped that we want at Grino Road, shipped to Morphe, then haul them over to Grino Road, all because of that residential zoning on Grino Road. Also on Grino Road, we have a little area where we do research and development. We've developed 12 camellias which have U.S. patents and are going through an international patent process where they'll be introduced in Europe and along the Pacific Rim. And then another thing we do is host a lot of garden tours, either at our home or at the nursery. We've hosted visitors and tour groups from now 30-something states and from six different continents. In the bicentennial year, we'll be hosting the American Camellia Society Convention, group of maybe 100 or so visitors who'll be visiting the nursery, and then we have to choose another three venues in Farough for them to spend the day. So that'll be fun. So a brief history of that section of Grino Road, whereupon our nursery and garden center lies. In 1932, Farough's population was roughly about 1,500, and Grino Road was literally a red clay rut. The property owners along Grino Road actually gave property right, right-of-way to the state in order to have the road paved. And then by 1960, frankly, not much had changed, other than the population had tripled by that time. My sisters, in the picture behind there, they used to go out and play hopscotch in the road, and every once in a while you could hear one of them scream, "There's a car coming, get out." You know, about every 15 minutes, a car would come down the road. But roughly about the mid-1960s was the last time any home was built on Farough, and I believe that's the one that's just to the east of us that Wayne mentioned on Lynnwood subdivision. There are four residences still on Grino Road between Valanta Avenue to the north and Edwards to the south, and of those, three are abandoned. And the fourth is the picture in the background at the upper right. That's a World War II hero, Mr. Edward Bishop, lives there, and he has no desire to move. He's been there 70-something years. You wouldn't be able to get him out of that house. But the point there is that there's no residential, residential character left to Grino Road. Three abandoned homes and one with a gentleman in his 90s. So when Grino Road was widened, there was roughly about 100 feet of right-of-way taken along there, and that definitely changed the character from residential to business if, if not, if it hadn't already been. And today, with Farough's population over 20,000 and climbing quickly, the city mows the median in front of our nursery there every Friday morning at 4:30, which undoubtedly awakens Mr. Bishop, since it awakens us roughly 600 feet to the west of there. And we have, although it's, has to be, Thomas Hospital being right down the road, we have at least eight emergency vehicles with sirens running back and forth down Grino Road every day, and I believe we're probably the only residential street whereupon that occurs. So you've seen the planning department's map of this. This reiterates that we have 2.8 acres roughly that we're asking for the B2 designation. Grino Road at the top of the picture. Hoyle Street is to our left. Live Oak on the right, to the south. In place now are three ALDOT-approved commercial accesses to our nursery. Two of them are ingress egress, Hoyle and Grino, and Live Oak to the south is an egress only. So there won't be any problems with traffic in that area. The area in the green is our homestead, and as Mr. Dias mentioned, it's a natural drainage area, so it's a natural buffer that occurs there between us and our neighbors to the west, as outlined in that red area. That is Lilian Circle, a small cul-de-sac. And please remember where that is because in a couple slides, I want to show you what's occurring in that area, that maybe this rezoning might be able to help with that. And also, at the base of the H on Hoyle Street, that's another area that's highly sensitive in the watershed. And our property, you can see from the overhead, it's pretty well-built out now as B2. There's quite a few structures on it, but it only lends itself really to a low-impact design. And the way it is now, it's over 90% permeable surface, and we have no plans on increasing that, other than make some disability access to the, to the various things we intend to This is what those buffers look like between us and our neighbors. They divide our, our personal garden from the business. So this is what we propose, kind of a micro-village that's halfway between Farough Avenue and Valanta Avenue and Valanta Park. We're having more and more people walking and biking through that area, and I think it would be nice to present a little respite in between those two areas. But to do so, we'd have to partner with other entities to make this happen. My wife and I are not going to start a bunch of new businesses at age 60, but we've had a lot of younger folks come to us with some wonderful ideas, and what we're wanting to do is have this grow organically and not be overly planned into something, somewhat of a pud that would have to be developed in a certain manner, that everything would be perfectly set in place and in stone, and at every turn you would be going back and asking for changes. We don't think that, that is necessary on this project, on this proposal, and on this rezoning, and we think we've been good enough stewards and have shown that we can be trusted to carry through with what we say. So you may have on this site restaurants in an atmosphere such as this. And this is almost equally important to us. I would say it is equally important to us, the environmental, environmental sensitivity of this project. We are, the gully behind us is the receptor of the Valanta watershed. All the water from Edwards Avenue to the south and from Valanta Avenue to the north, plus the Arborette subdivision across the street from us, all of that property, all of that watershed empties into that gully right behind our house and right behind our nursery and adjacent to the little cul-de-sac Lilian Circle. So through the years, there have been some proposals to help with that, and one of them, we commissioned ourself, a drainage study of that basin. Another was rather recently done by Jade Consulting, and he had made some recommendations for, that would involve ALDOT and other private entities and the city of Farough to create regional retention in that area. And we think, this photo shows probably about an eight-to-nine inch rain several years ago. This is at the end of Hoyle Street. This is not untypical. It was close to this the other day when we had the six-inch rain on Friday. But with what we're wanting, there's a, there's an opportunity there for a regional retention pond. It would be a partnership of private folks such as us and ALDOT and the city of Farough, who obviously owns Hoyle Street, an unimproved, one-block-long street, and it would be, it would take the cooperation of property owners to the north to make that happen. But it would benefit over 200 property owners from Grino Road to Farrell Yacht Club. There we go. So this is what happens to all that water. This is behind Lilian Circle and points downstream. It's just scouring that watershed. And this shows after we had a, yet another 100-year rain event. We've had now 11 in the last 16 years. 60 feet above and to the right of this photo is our back porch, so you can see it's quite a concern to us. And this structure, this gabion wall, this is a photo I took a couple days before I was here in January. And this is that same structure today, which could fail at the next rain. Right above it, in the little blue clearing, is Lilian Circle. And at any time when this fails, Lilian Circle will be down in the bottom of this gully, and all this red mud will be in Mobile Bay. So that might, might sound like a digression from why we're here tonight, but to us, it's equally important. And I think with what we're trying to do to our property, with our property, we can partner with other entities to alleviate some of these huge problems, and they don't involve further studies. The studies have already been done by Jade Consulting. It just takes the effort to follow through. Yeah, the one that we commissioned ourself also made mention of how to take care of these problems. But along Grino, there have been, it's just, really to me, it's been, as many opportunities has been and controversies and struggles. And this is one that at one time was controversial, but I think it turned out beautifully. This is an opportunity gained. This is the most recent business along Grino Road at Edwards and Grino. It looks like a home, beautifully maintained, beautifully landscaped. The sign maybe has a big footprint, but undeniably beautifully done. There have been a few opportunities lost. A couple years ago, Lee, you'll remember, a couple young ladies that owned two sugar kettles, and Daphne and Baymanette came before planning and zoning, and they wanted to turn an early 1900s home directly across the street from our nursery into a third sugar kettle, which would have been wonderful. But that, they were turned down, turned away, and that opportunity was lost. So that home, with nobody to love it, nobody's going to buy it as a residence. The only thing left in the homeowners, in the new owners' eyes was to gift it to the city of Farough as a burn training, which they did, and you can see in the photo, it was a spectacular burn. But what an opportunity lost for an historic structure. Yeah. Coincidentally, just a week ago, the sugar kettle won some beautification awards in Daphne. And then at your last meeting, you had another opportunity, and I'm sure you can come up with a creative solution that will make this work. The only, the only problem with this is you just didn't have enough square footage to, to make the business work. Somebody came with a, with a good idea, and I don't, and I think all of you were perhaps, hate to put words in your mouth, I think that most of you were for this, just couldn't make it work on the property and protect the residents behind. So in summation, as Mr. Dias said, Grino Road, it's transforming daily with traffic and the character of it. And so what we'd ask of you tonight is to have regard for my wife and I, who have a track record, I believe, of respect for not only aesthetics in our neighbors, but for the environment, the treacherous environment around us. But our vision for this property has movable parts and has multiple partners. It's not just my wife and I who will be putting this together. But we would ask that you trust us with this, just the way Farough has always trusted the downtown area, it's always grown organically, and we think this property can grow organically over time itself. And that's what I have for you. I'd be happy to answer. I'd be happy to answer any questions. My wife can probably ask, answer them better than I, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bobby. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing now.
Okay.
And then...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
You can. Normally, we open the public hearing, take a list of questions, and then I turn it over to the commissioners to ask questions. If that's all right. Do you want to add something before the public hearing, Deborah?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to add something before the public hearing?
Yes, if I might, please.
Oh, sure, of course.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys hearing us this evening again. And I have to say that Bobby's focus on trusting us, you know, I, you guys don't know us. You really don't. The only way you know us is by what our property looks like, what we've done. No matter how many bombs the city has thrown at us through the years, we've always maintained respect for ourselves and for City of Fairhope. We're asking for this B2 zoning based on historical documents and facts that are backed by your own city records. Most of you know me coming up here just ranting and raving over things that you have done, good or bad. I wish I could take some of them back, not all of them. But, you know, that's just growing up, I suppose. But we do ask you to trust us on this. People have this idea of B2 zoning. And I don't know what it is. Maybe it's control. Maybe it's fear of what might, can, and can't go there. But when you look at what can go into B2 zoning, it's pretty restricted. And we have been operating under B2 zoning since the first time the city of Fairhope allowed a quote-unquote grandfathered business to expand. And even in the minutes of the seven or eight times that Bobby's father came up here between 1960, when, or 62, when all of a sudden there was a zoning map and says, "You are either R1 or R2." We still don't know that. The records are totally unclear. Seven, eight times he came up here. Seven, eight times he was turned down. And finally, his lawyer said, "Just start building." And that's what he did. And the city kept giving permit after permit after permit. The business expanded. We have actually operated under B2 since, Lord, since at least the 1978, 1980. I have business licenses. I have tax documents. I have records from every entity on the planet that recognizes us as a commercial entity and not specifically under B2. But the only people who do not recognize us as such is the city of Fairhope zoning. And I know there are people that are going to come up here and probably rant and rave, you know, "You can't do B2. The city's got to control you." I think we've done pretty well without control. And I think we could continue to do well. And if you allow Bobby and I to do this, and he keeps talking about folks that are interested in doing this with us, that's not in stone. That's just a given. And how it will organically, it's not a given, and it's how it may organically grow. But what we could have done, and what we didn't do, because it's not who we are, we could have done some, some pretty heavy-duty re-landscaping like the trailer park. You know, that was quite an eye-opener even for me. We didn't do that. We could have. We could have gotten 100 people up here. We didn't do that. We're standing on our own merits and what we've done through the years, and we're asking you to trust us. The last piece of property that was zoned B2 was Jack Ellis's property. And what I remember, and I don't know what was in your packets, but I do remember what was said, is that they are good people. I'm surprised it wasn't rezoned B2 all along. Well, we get that from an awful lot of people around here now. You're not commercial, you know? They just don't understand that. So I ask you to trust us. I ask you to work with us on this. There are other things we can do with the property, yeah. We don't want to. We want to keep it nice, park-like. We want it to grow. We want it to protect the environment. We want to protect the city. People talk about a comprehensive plan for Greeno Road. That's been tried. We tried. A group of us tried. That was just shot out the window. So, you know, we just hope that you're on board with us with this and can go along with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. For those of you in the audience who don't know, in this case, this is a zoning request to go from a residential to a commercial zoning. So in this case, the Planning and Zoning Commission simply makes a recommendation. The city council will ultimately make the decision on this. As such, we have a public hearing. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. At the end of the public hearing, I'll ask the developer to come back up, or the staff, and answer any questions that people may have. The first person on the agenda, or excuse me, the first person on the list for the public hearing is Taylor Wilkins III. And Taylor, when you come up and everybody else, if you'll be so kind, is to let Emily know your address, your name and address.
All right. Thank you all. I'm Taylor Wilkins. Now, my address is 330 Bay Hill Drive, Daphne, Alabama. So I hope that doesn't hold anything against you.
Just for our public record.
But the reason I'm up here is I purchased about a year ago the lot that adjoins, probably I would say, the closest lot to y'all. It adjoins their house. And with, most likely, the idea of to build a house there. But I'm here because I got to know the Greens. And one of the things that Bobby came over to me as soon as I bought it, and I hadn't, and said to me, you know, Taylor, you know, he introduced himself and he said, "I wish I would have met you before, because, you know, if you didn't know, this is how my property, you know, we're looking at transition." And we talked for about 30 minutes, and I thought it was excellent. I have no problem with it. I've lived up beside commercial. I've lived beside residential. There are benefits to both. One of the things getting to know the Greens, and for if y'all don't know, they have the bottle that was originally there on Morphy on the corner. That can kind of date you depending. Now, I'm 45, so I don't have as much age as Art here. But, you know, from remembering when this was Dale Shamps and that was 7-Eleven, we've all seen a lot of changes through the years. Now, I'll say this, and, you know, being up here, I'm glad some of the things that are coming up about the corridor. I've been coming to Fairhope for a long time in my life. I remember stopping off at the nursery when I was a kid on my way to Point Clear. And my parents bought the chameleons there. And I remember when it was a store atmosphere, retail and all that, and it was a nice place. And it's funny how life circled back, you know, circled backs around. But one thing I want to say is, you know, we all know how much our area is changing. And it makes sense to come up with a neat and desirable plan for this corridor coming into Fairhope on the four lane. And we all know, who've been around, heard different things through the years, but protecting downtown. And yes, downtown looks great. But I think that, you know, from the new warehouse district to other districts around Fairhope, you know, y'all have the ability to make a big difference. And I don't think it's going to hurt downtown, you know? It might help from a retail perspective to give some people some different areas, maybe more reasonable rents, to see where they want to be. As far as, I think it also, you know, I'm beginning to see a lot more people using the sidewalk along that area, going to the Fairhope Rec Center. And since y'all expanded it out to Publix, I think that's going to be used more. There's a lot of sidewalks that don't get used. But I think that from golf carts and sidewalks, you know, if something like this is developed, it could be a neat place where, you know, somebody might get tired of a spot in town, and they might want to venture here, or they might want to venture to the warehouse district. I thought to myself, and, you know, y'all should create SOFA and NOFA. Now, y'all can laugh, but South of Fairhope, North of Fairhope, you know? But I think that would be good, you know? So you can say, you know, well, I guess it would create some more bumper stickers, too. But, you know, not to get far off track, I just think that they have a neat vision. And I think sometimes, you know, and a lot of the old guard of Fairhope passed away, and there's a lot of new blood in town, and it's a good thing. And, you know, there's no, you can't, you can only hold back so much growth. But I think the four lane makes the best sense of allowing some of these people who are locals and who've owned property for a long time to try to work with developers and/or, you know, not develop, do it themselves and do it. The seaside school of thought was they did a little bit at a time, and they made it really neat. I mean, it didn't just go gangbusters right away. And I think we've lost that to some big-time developers. And I mean, you know, they can write the big checks and everything else. And I think the Greens are fine, folks. I'm here because I don't have a problem with it being an adjoining landowner. I think some other people in that little neighborhood where I am would be fine with it as well. And to wrap it all up, you know, they could have done some through the years, they could have, we all know they could have done some probably strategic and aggressive things. You know, Bobby, for all I can tell, and Deborah, both are fine stewards of, you know, the environment. But they could have, you know, left trucks out by the road. We've seen armored trucks and vans and all the stuff on the corridor of Daphne, you know, for sign ordinances dodging this. You know, they could have been aggressive and all. But look how pretty this is. I mean, if you've never walked that piece of property, you should. And, you know, Helen Keller had a quote that said, "The only thing that could be worse than being blind is to have sight and no vision." So I'll leave you all with that. But I appreciate your time, and y'all've got a big job ahead of you. So, thank you. Have a good one.
I'm Larry Stayschool, address 60 Door, Thinkle Side. I represent the majority of the property ownership southward of the Green property down to Gaver Street. As Bobby recounted some of the history, his dad and my dad both been around here for a long time. They didn't always agree, but they were, they were here. Want to compliment the commission staff and the presentation that Wayne made. And I want to recognize this commission and some of its recent predecessors for actions that have finally begun to recognize and realize that Greeno quit being a residential street 40 years ago. And I'm really seeing progress with the city. I'm not going to go back and repeat all comments that Bobby made, made good ones, Wayne presented You all and we are not determining what the future of Greeno is. The market is. Wayne's last house built on Greeno was built in the early 70s. My dad built it. Nobody wants to live on a divided four-lane highway. It has not been residential since it quit being the pig trail that Bobby talked about. I wholeheartedly support the actions this commission's taken recently to recognize that with some of the either rezoning actions or rezoning recommendations. And I certainly encourage y'all to favorably consider the Greens' application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stayschool. Next person on the list is Luana Maidstone.
I'm Luana Maidstone, and my husband David and I live at 512 Lilian Circle, which is the, at the very end of the circle. We have always enjoyed being neighbors to the Greens. And when I came to this meeting today, I had a lot of questions about this because the back of my house, I can actually see 98 from the back of my house, and all of the property behind Greens Nursery has always been kind of a buffer. So I really liked what I saw in your proposal. One of the big concerns I have is the drainage, of course, because we have a lot of drainage that comes through the back of our yard and goes down that gully. And I need to know what guarantee that we would have, that that is not going to be a problem once you put in this development. Also, another thing I'm concerned about is that the back of my house backs up to Hoyle Avenue, and that is owned by another developer. And I'm concerned about the precedence that this might set for anything future that could come up behind my house. So those are, those are the questions I have. But I really like what I saw in your presentation, so.
Thank you very much. The next person on the list is Susan Rossberg. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm Susan Rossberg, and we live on Lilian Circle. We back up to the nursery. And we also have sort of the corner of the ravine. And we really came today to listen and hear what the proposal is. I also liked what I heard in your presentation. My main concern is about the area that's the preservation and the ravine and how we can work towards keeping that functional and protecting. We care an awful lot about that also. And just look forward to hearing more and appreciate the way you take care of the grounds behind our house, too. It's frequently cleared out. It's frequently cleared out, and it's always very nice. So thank you for that. And like I said, we look forward to hearing more. Go ahead. Question?
Okay. I'm Bill Stromberg. I also live at 508 Lilian Circle. And so, Bobby, I appreciate your presentation because it was very, very informative. And it looks like a very well-thought-out, good development plan for property that I don't think currently realizes the value that it has. Saying that, I've got some concerns. So let me just give you all some questions that Susan and I and the rest of the residents on Lilian Circle have. So the first...
When you mentioned the questions, I'm making a list, and I'll have the Greens come up and address them all at once, rather than going back and forth. And I've got drainage, the buffer and the ravine listed, which the Greens touched on, but I'll get them to touch on that more, as well as I'll ask the city staff about the, to explain the process as far as the drainage and the drainage requirements that would have to be met if this were rezoned B2 at the time of permitting.
Okay. So that takes care of one of my questions.
Okay.
So let me just keep going here.
Sure.
So on the map that was shown at the beginning of the presentation, it showed an area called, I believe, Green Preservation. Was that, was that right? Did I get that right?
That's where the land was.
Right. So I'd like to, I'd like to understand what that means, when you, when you call out preservation. So when I look at that, I would think that that would mean that's never going to be developed. And certainly, that gully can't be developed.
No, as long as we...
But there is a buffer that, that goes up, that separates the active nursery from Lilian Circle, from our property there. So I'd like to understand what the intent is for a parcel labeled preservation, if there is any intent, short-term or long-term, for the development of that, of that parcel.
Sure. And I'll call them back up and ask that question.
Okay.
If you have any others. And let me say this, though, right now, this is actually a rezoning. So, you know, this is not a site plan review. The Greens could hold this property in their family for another 100 years, or they could sell it tomorrow. So when we make this approval, you know, other than, than, you know, looking at the subdivision regs for B2, you know, that's what would be required.
Okay.
So I just, just want to let you know that. So, I just, just want to let you know that. But I'll be glad to-
All right, Mr. Turner. And I, and I appreciate your comment. The Greens stood up and said they are good stewards of their property. So, once they make that statement, they open themselves up to questions about stewardship. Okay?
Sure.
So, all right.
And I'm going to ask them that question.
Is this the home?
Yes.
That says residential. Says Green Residential.
That's the property around their house.
Okay. So, I'd still like to understand what the, what the plans are for that, for that parcel. I'd like to understand if you, if the Greens own any frontage on Lillian Circle, and, and the intent to maintain that frontage. We've covered drainage. If they have a forecasted traffic impact, how much traffic do they expect to come into that parcel that they're requesting rezoning on, and what that would mean to traffic on Gayfer in particular? And I'd like to understand what the, what the plan is for their first project if this rezoning is granted. Okay? And I greatly appreciate your attentiveness on these. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let us everybody who has signed up to speak. I will see if anybody else would like to speak to this public hearing. Matt?
I'm Mac Walcott. I didn't know this was on the agenda tonight, but I'm, I'm so excited because it's kind of a nice coincidence that our property, Van Intour Park, is at the end of the watershed. And the Greens have led the way in encouraging the city to understand the whole drainage basin better. We looked at the paper Bobby had written about Fairhope gullies, and also looked at some of the pictures of the way they've restored the gully at their property. And I think there, I'm so excited that there may be something done on Hoyle Avenue that could affect all of us downstream. And I just think, I want to encourage the partnership he's suggesting to happen because it affects all of us. And I think, I think they've led the way, being at the head of the watershed. I'll check that. So, we're fully in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Would anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
TJ Murphy, 204 Tensaw Avenue. Lee, at last month's meeting, you had mentioned that you were going to get with the mayor about some help with Greeno Road, maybe looking at some overlay. Were you able to do that to any degree?
I don't remember saying the mayor specifically, but the staff. And yes, we have discussed that.
Okay.
And one thing that Wayne has told me is that at our next meeting, he'll have a list of items that he is going to suggest for us to do on that section of Greeno Road that will address, you know, these items. Items such as having the buildings face Greeno, have the parking in the rear, things that'll be more, make these, you know, properties more attractive as far as the development without, you know, not architectural review or anything nearly to that extent, but just, you know, basically looking at buffering parking, building faces, you know, et cetera.
Okay. The, my concern with this project is like the other projects that I've spoken to the commission about. And let me just read a quote, actually, from the city's response to this that, that kind of goes to the heart of what I've been talking about on page 10 of the city's response to this. It says, "The comprehensive plan does not necessarily define the boundary of limits for commercial development along Greeno Road. However, the staff's opinion that logical boundaries should be discussed and addressed at some point so they can be effectively communicated to the public." That really has been my issue with, with Greeno Road and with the comp plan overall. As you know, right now, the current comprehensive plan calls for that entire area to be R1, which doesn't seem to be real practical. So, what you're left in the position of doing is approving these developments as they come forth in piecemeal, which to me is just not a very good plan. So, I've really pleaded with the mayor and with the council, with, excuse me, with the commission and with the city council, that the plan is not working. It just is not practical. Let's change the plan. And why can't we take what the Greens envision with their property and move that further along the corridor? That seems like a very logical thing to do. It is irrational for me and for most people in this community that, that a city of this size, with the intellect we have, with the capital resources that we have, that we still do not have a viable, working, comprehensive plan. It, it just doesn't seem logical. So, at some point, we've got to draw a line in the sand, stop kicking this down the road, and hope that it's going to change, and prevent you guys from being in an uncomfortable position of approving or denying these requests. So, regardless of how noble, regardless of how gallant some of these intentions are, the bottom line is, it is a rezoning change to B2. So, they have good intentions. How are you going to deny the next one if their intentions aren't as noble? Okay? In the city's response to this, they actually cited approval of the Higgs PUD and approval of Point Place PUD. I believe it's called Point Place, which was a trailer park down the road. If we approve this one, we're, again, putting ourselves in an uncomfortable position of how do we deny the next one that comes along that may not be as attractive, that may not be as noble, may not have the intentions that the Greens have here. We've got to get to the point to where we come up with a better, sustainable, comprehensive plan, particularly for Greeno Road. Right now, those defining boundaries that talks about in the comprehensive plan, the natural one right now that exists is from 104 South to Gayfer Avenue. There's, there's very little development in the area right now, but we continue to encroach on that. That is the creep that the citizens have continued to be concerned about. So, that, that, you know, that particular project, I don't have a concern with. But we've got to stop piecemealing these projects as they come along. We've, we've got to put some more teeth into the comprehensive plan. If that means going back and spending the money to, to put some more guidance in, in the comprehensive plan, we need to do that, you know, because it, that, that should not be something that you guys are in a position doing. As citizens, we shouldn't have to be coming up here and learning about these projects every time you guys have a commission meeting.
TJ, let me interrupt you for just a second. You make some excellent, excellent points. One thing to remember, though, is comprehensive plans in Alabama don't have teeth like they do in Florida. They're just general guidance. The second thing to remember is to get one comprehensive plan that covers every aspect of Fairhope is very difficult. The nodal type of comprehensive plan is what normally people who have property on Greeno Road or have property on Howie 181 would like. But that's not typically how Fairhope, you know, wants to grow, i.e. Spanish Ford. So, you know, if we change the comprehensive plan to match what we need on Greeno and 181, then what about, you know, all the rest of Fairhope? And, and, you know, I'm not saying the comprehensive plan doesn't need to be changed. It certainly does. Greeno Road needs to be addressed, and Howie 181 need to be addressed.
That's absolutely true.
Because they're such thoroughfares. And when you have those thoroughfares like that, they don't necessarily, you know, set in very well what they, what the Village Center type of a comprehensive plan. With that said, I'd love to see us do some type of a form-based plan for Howie 181 and Greeno. I think that would be very appropriate. Who cares what's there, as long as it looks nice? That's what people tell us. They don't tell us, you know, hey, we don't want people living on Greeno, or we want businesses on Greeno. They say, we just don't want Greeno, excuse the French, but to look like crap. And that's the one guidance that we have. So, that's where this does get difficult, as you mentioned. But with that said, if you throw out the entire comprehensive plan, because of a two-and-a-half, three-mile stretch on Greeno and a couple of miles stretch on 181, you're ignoring, you know, thousands and thousands of acres where it actually makes a lot of sense. But, but you do make some good points. And that's one thing that I'm hoping Wayne, you know, can do with a lot of his experience from, you know, 30A, where, you know, out in Destin, you had 30A that was kind of their thoroughfare, that then, you know, but then you had the village areas as well, as well as, you know, a lot of commercial pressure there. But you make some excellent points. I wasn't trying to argue with you. I was just explaining from our view, because the comprehensive plan doesn't work with, you know, this one area that we've got a lot of pressure right now, doesn't mean that it's a, you know, a lousy document from top to bottom.
Well, and I'm not arguing what the city necessarily does.
The point is that we want the density near the commercial areas so that we don't end up with traffic grid like you get in Atlanta or Houston, in these places that have just allowed sprawl in general. So, so that's the good part of the comprehensive plan allows and pushes that we try to enforce.
Right. And, and I'm not arguing for a wholesale change of the comprehensive plan. That's up to the city. We do have an issue, and, and you agreed to that at the last meeting. You said, "Look, if I didn't have to deal with Greeno Road at all, my life would be a lot easier."
I'm not arguing with you at all.
There are parts of the plan that certainly need to be addressed with a higher priority than others. And one of those is Greeno Road.
Absolutely.
Because the citizens have said, "We do not want Greeno Road to turn into the nightmare." Well, it's slowly turning into that nightmare by default, by, by us continuing to approve these projects. And I agree with you. You're not going to get a plan that addresses every single issue. But, but in this case, in the cases last month, they're in direct violation, direct violation of the comprehensive plan. That's not anywhere close to it. So, again, all I'm saying is, at some point, you guys need to put the pressure back on the mayor and the city council to do something with this plan if it's not right. Because we've got to draw a line somewhere, because we shouldn't have to be wondering every month what's going to come up along as far as rezoning. Bottom line is, it's a rezoning request. I love your plan. It's great. What about the next plan? That 16 acres that is just to the north of that, that right now is R1, what do you think is going to happen when they get there approved? Those, those people on that 16 acres are going to be right before you saying, "Hey, hello, rezoning time." What are you going to say?
I'm not arguing.
You know? And that's all I'm saying. You're, you're losing your leverage in terms of anything being done along that stretch that is perfect, that is a perfect boundary right now. But again, to your point, you're going to have the same issue south of, on South Greeno Road, too. It's continuing to be developed as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
My name's Claude Puckett, and I'm a neighbor of the Greens, and I'm proud of their plan. I remember one time they were flat dead against rezoning. But I worked for the League of Municipalities for about 10 years after I retired. And I'd go in about 98% of the city halls. Stretches like we have on Greeno Road, if it was not intelligently zoned, it wound up being worthless. And I've heard some cities say, "I wish a few years ago, we'd have made changes." We have that chance today. Another thing I want to say about a comprehensive plan, they're very expensive. It's about five or six planning commissioners in the state of Alabama. I've made the statement many times. Show me one in the state of Alabama that has gone by the comprehensive plan. They don't exist. Nowhere. And they're very expensive. I think we here in Fairhope have enough knowledge and whatnot to kind of help control ourselves without spending that big money on that comprehensive plan. But anyway, I have no objections to what's being done. I approve of it. And I hope you all approve of it, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckett. At this point, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Before I ask Mr. Green to come back up, Wayne, could you explain to us on B2 what the buffering is between B2 and residential?
Thank you, Lee. Great question. Assuming this is rezoned to B2, the buffer between B2 and residential is 20 feet. Landscape buffer. It can include fences, those kind of things. And so, a 20-foot buffer would be there. That's a pretty significant buffer, in my opinion. We pointed out in our, in our report, that it would be 20 feet.
Okay.
If I could also just mention some comprehensive-
And also, I have one more question.
Sure.
Frank, sorry, Lee. The drainage, when would the drainage be addressed if this were rezoned B2? The drainage would be addressed upon building permits, correct?
Building permits. And also, there's some thresholds in, in the ordinance that sets a higher level review as well. There's, there's a site plan review, for example, once you reach a certain size. And so, that, that would be in place, too. If it was going to be a larger building, it'd be a, a more detailed study done on, on the drainage. So, yes, it would be reviewed. If I could just mention real quickly, you know, we talk about Greeno Road, and we don't want it to become Airport Boulevard and all those things like that. And I want to point out also that currently in your ordinance, the way it's written today is that you have a maximum of 18,000 square foot footprint you can have at the Village Center. In this case, it would be Fair Avenue and, I mean, in, in Greeno Road. That would be the Village Center. As you get away from that Village Center, it's 8,000 square foot footprint that's allowed. You can't build any bigger than that. So, that sort of prohibits some of the larger, big-box retail stores you think of. So, we do have some protections in place for that. And so, I think that's something that needs to be said. Also, as far as the comprehensive plans, they're exactly right. In Alabama, comprehensive plans are a guide. There's, it's not, not a legal document. It's not law. Some states, it's that way. It's not that way in Alabama. But it does provide a useful guide, and I believe a very effective guide on how to dictate or, or manage growth in, in a city or a county. If you can give some forethought to land use decision-making well in advance of an immediate action, I believe it always helps, helps things to stay in sync. So, you're not making ad hoc decisions on a, on a case-by-case basis. You're looking to an overall, long-term plan. I think that's very important. Comprehensive plans, take into consideration sewer and water and, and transportation. All those things are taken into account well, well in advance of a particular development. So, I'm, I'm a big believer in that process because you can make these changes a little bit easier if you put some thought into it well in advance of these changes. Planning and zoning is always controversial, no matter where you go. I've, I've worked in three states, and every one of them's controversial. But if you can sort of go ahead and lay out a pattern of development, so when a developer or owner comes in and can see what the city anticipates that being, where growth is occurring, it makes that process a lot easier. People can buy property with some forethought on how it will be developed in the future. So, so then it becomes a calculated decision as you go forward. So, but again, I do believe that we can do some things on Greeno Road that can improve the conditions. And that's something that we'll be talking about hopefully next week, next meeting. Some small, small things. I don't think we need to go into any great elaborate design schemes on Greeno Road. I think that's not appropriate. Fair hope's always been more of an eclectic-type community. And in my experience with some of the design aspects, when you start dictating color and those kind of things, it gets to a point where you've got a very mundane and boring city. I don't think you want that here. But there are a few things we can do to try to limit some of the objectionable issues. And at least I've heard in my six months here, I know you have heard a lot longer than that, but we can do some things that can create a good balance between giving the ability and the creativity to a property owner to develop the property, but also some assurances that it won't turn out poorly. So, just want to make those comments.
Thank you very much.
I've got it. Wayne, excuse me.
Mr. Chairman.
The plaque that's on the screen doesn't, I'm just, I'm just trying to get this for clarification purposes, because I think maybe there's some confusion. I know there is for me. Until I see this, which was in our packet. But the drawing that you've got on the first page of this report is not indicative of what I, I think I heard the Greens say they wanted to do. And I believe from some of the comments that I've heard, that there maybe is some other confusion about that also. So, first of all, where did this come from? And second of all, is the, is the plaque that the Greens are, in terms of the rezoning, is just the two, what was it, 2.8 acres?
Right.
It's not the residential piece, the, the, the green residential piece. That's going to remain residential. Is that correct?
Or the, the, this pic you have in your packet, which is the, the outlined area that's based on tax parcel data that was presented to us in the application.
Okay.
And it's about 2.8 acres.
First of all, there's a piece of it that's missing. And second of all, it, it indicates to me that the entire property is attempting to be, they would like the entire property rezoned. But according to this plaque, I think what I see, it's only, for what Bobby Green said, it's only 2.8 acres.
Right.
That they're, they're asking for a rezoning. So, there's still going to be a residential buffer between everything else to the west.
Correct. That's right.
Yeah, just the part in red is what's going to be rezoned.
That's right. No, no, that's not correct.
And the green.
To the west of, you see that dotted line right below Hoyle? To the west of that, there's no buffer between the commercial and the residential. If you look down just above the Live Oak- If you look down just above the Live Oak, where that dotted line is, that's the Greens' property to the west. So, that'll be a residential buffer, but the Greens own that.
The very last page of your packet is this survey.
Correct.
It's shown on the screen on the right hand side. That's the portion that they want the rezon to be to.
The portion that's labeled Block 24?
Yes, that's correct.
But not 23.
Okay.
Just the same.
Okay.
Block 24, but not Block 23.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, right.
And, and I think the confusion is, we've got partial IDs, we've got part of the property that's not going to be utilized. It's part of the partial ID, but the whole lot's not being utilized, right?
So, they're going to keep a residential section of their property? I'm assuming that's where y'all live?
That is correct. Bobby, do you want to come up now and answer the questions?
There's a requirement that you give the planning department PIN numbers. And the PIN numbers, probably, Emily, that's how it became that larger piece of property where we had actually carved out these large buffers from that and came up with a meets and bounds description, and that's where the 2.8 acres is.
Okay.
Right.
You had mentioned the drainage and the buffer earlier, and obviously, the drainage doesn't come into play now. But, but if, but the drainage, the buffer and the ravine were all discussed. They asked about, you know, your residential property. And then, if you want to answer those three, then the, there was questions about your frontage on Lilian Circle, traffic impact is to Gafer, and then is there a phase? Do you have the idea of what's going to be Phase 1 of your project?
Sure. Well, first, the issue with the stormwater, and that's a long story. And it goes way back to how the history of Fairhope, if you'll look at soil maps, Fairhope was a series of grady ponds. There were depressions everywhere in Fairhope that naturally held water. And through the years, those have been, through ditch cuts, drained uphill, frankly, onto other properties. And we have been the receptor of most of those drainages along Greeno Road. There were historically three, one very large one to the north of our property on, it's actually 36 acres, not 16 acres, north of us. But there's a, there were two grady ponds on that property, both of which have been drained into this ravine. There was one on our property, which Aldott turned into a riprap ditch. There's one on the Lindwood property, which is partially drained onto this property. There's, was one on Arbor Gates property. And it, every time it rains, every drop of rain from the west half of Arbor Gates property is forced under Greeno Road and into that drain behind Lilian Circle, behind our nursery and behind our residence. It's just too much water. And as I mentioned before, I think from Edward Street, the highway drains from Edward Street to the south and Valanta to the north, all to this one little ravine behind our nursery and behind our neighbors at Lilian Circle. It's too much water. And you saw from the photos what's happening. We're very concerned about it. But our property, I mentioned, was very permeable, and we have no plans of changing that. It would be too impactful to this watershed to do so. And to our home, we're, I think, we're the, the most damaged by all that water. And we've been to a number of council meetings, a number of planning meetings, preaching that for years and years and years, trying to get some relief in that. And I, I think there's a way to make that happen. I know, Mr. Peterson, it's a primary concern of yours, because I was at the meeting the other night where you, where you brought it up. But, but it's a great opportunity for that to happen. Yes, that, that would, but as far as the 2.8 acres go, I don't think if it was developed in a harmful way, it could make any huge impression on that gully. The water is flowing through that 2.8 acres, not from it into that ravine. It's just throwing, flowing through it and behind it. But that does create a natural buffer area between retail and business in that the city's code, say, 20 feet, well, between Lilian Circle and the 2.8 acres is actually about 112 feet of a buffer. And the diagonal strip that you see there is Aldott's riprap ditch. And that's 50 feet of a buffer that divides the business and our personal residence. And we do have some property on Lilian Circle. It's, I guess you could call it a lot. It's very narrow and very adjacent to the erodible gully. And at one time, we had access to it from our residence. But with that erosion, we've lost 100, and I think it's like 120 feet over the years. So, we can't access that lot from our residence anymore. We can't cross that ravine. There's no way to do so. But yes, we have a, a small lot on Lilian Circle, and it, of course, would remain residential.
Have you done anything as far as, do you have a first phase of the project? And, and have you done anything about traffic yet at this point?
No, the, the, we don't have a, a Phase 1 or 2 or any plans along that, along those lines. We would hope that we would upgrade the existing structure that's on there, the permanent structure, and some of the others. There's a lot of plans for that. Maybe emphasizing retail again, which we did at one point. And then, we've talked with other entrepreneurs about some other ventures on there as well. But it, it wouldn't be in the line of a planned unit development where everything happens at once. It would be more along what Wayne said, just an eclectic progression over years.
Sure. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point, and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. Do you have any questions of the Greens while they're here in front of us?
Just, just one more little clarification. Look at the plaque on the, on the wall.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like that's a parcel 14 and 15 down below the drainage easel. That is included in your residential property that you're going to keep residential, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, I got it.
That's what the state called an uneconomic remnant.
Any more questions for the developer? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Any questions for staff? Discussions, ideas, thoughts?
I had a question for Wayne.
Yes.
I wondered if, partially to address neighbors' concerns, if you could walk through the difference in permitting and review for incremental development, incremental commercial development versus a PUD?
Incremental development, we just that. Each, each particular site plan would be reviewed, depending on the size of that development. It would be reviewed by the building department, or if it's, say, over a, a certain size, it would be reviewed by the planning commission through the formal site plan review process.
Which would include traffic. I'm trying to get back to the, the concerns that are raised and how they would be addressed in that process.
For, any project comes through, that comes to the city is evaluated against the zoning ordinance. And so, for example, if it was a, a smaller development that didn't meet the threshold for a site plan, then that would have, still have to come through review. We'll verify it for setbacks and parking and all those kinds of things. So, one process is, is an administrative process. When it's below the threshold, I think it's 10,000 square feet is the threshold. If it's above that 10,000 square foot threshold, it comes to the, the planning commission and the city council. However, of course, we have the limitation of, you can't have a building larger than 8,000 square feet on Greeno Road anyway. So, if that answers your question.
Well, and I guess I was just trying to clarify if the incremental versus the PUDs, if people had requested the PUD, if you're still subject to the same landscaping, stormwater, and setback requirements, then it seems that does.
Right. You know, with a PUD, I think you're coming in at one time, you're going ahead and you're laying out the, the development well in advance of what you, you know, you have a long-term plan of development in place. That would be reviewed at that time for stormwater, drainage, parking, the whole nine yards. When it's a piecemeal, again, you're looking at it on a piecemeal basis.
But the same, the same requirements would apply to them for, you know, doing it piecemeal.
Right, that's right.
There's not any leniency because of the-
Not necessarily, because on a PUD, you may put some self-imposed requirements, such as increased water runoff, retention, or increased buffers. So, a PUD actually becomes its own zoning, and everything's guaranteed.
For future development.
Where, where this would just be subject to the, you know, B2 zoning requirements that we have in any kind of an overlay. Which is why I've liked stuff like these proposals to come under PUDs, because then you've got the guarantees. Of course, with the Greens' plans, you know, they'd be coming back to us six times, and we'd be making changes to the PUDs over and over again. And people would say, "Hey, why do they bring a PUD when they're changing it all the time?" Which, you know, we hear complaints on that as well. And I think, you know, maybe the time's just come to, you know, let Wayne come with some overlay proposals to try to, you know, get the aesthetics that we're looking for from Greeno so that we don't mimic Airport Boulevard and just to say, "Heck, you know, a house hasn't been built since the 1960s." I mean, that's a pretty strong statement, and this has been operated as commercial for years and years. I mean, maybe it's, maybe it's time if we can do that.
And I think PUDs are a great tool to use. However, one of the concerns that's been expressed with PUDs is just that, as Lee mentioned, if your plans change, you have to come, depending on how specific they are, a lot of times, you have to come back to the process. It's a very bureaucratic process. With a form-based, like Lee was talking about earlier, form-based codes and things like that, it's a little, it's, a little more flexibility is built into that design, where again, you're more concerned about the aesthetics rather than the particular uses in there. But PUDs are good. I think there are, there are some drawbacks. It does limit probably over time, a little bit of creativity in the development. But again, you know, from the difference between a PUD and incrementally, just how they're reviewed, I guess, is, is the, is the main issue.
But also, one person's lucky enough to have 3.1 acres and another has 2.8.
Right. Because the threshold for a PUD's three acres. That's the threshold the city has.
I have a question, Wayne, real quick, while you're there. And what is the timeframe that the Greens would have to develop to get started? I know that we've had, you know, talked about the sunset clause and, and, you know, vacant land sitting, you know, without development.
Sure. Well, once the rezonings, if the rezoning is, is, is given to them, there, there is no time limit for that. They now have that entitlements that are included in the B2. Now, when you have site plans, there's, there's timeframes you have to operate under that. So, if they came forward with a site plan, and then there would be time limits for that. But with the B4, or the B2 zoning, there, it's, it's, it's an entitlement that we'll have from this point forward.
Does this come in just as one big lot? And then, if they want to subdivide, they can come in for subdivision?
The zoning does not change the lot.
So, the lots that are shown on the plaque are the lot?
The zoning will not, will not change that, what we would do. Because we have some lots that are split between, the tax parcel ID's split, we have to physically go in and draw that using the legal description and draw that on the zoning map. That's not common, but it's not difficult, it's not uncommon either, I guess. But it would not change the lot configuration or anything like that.
Well, I think it's the right thing to do. I don't know what y'all's dinner schedule is tonight, but we've got more to go. I'm like, I mean, I, I think it's the right thing to do. I make a motion, we recommend approval to the council.
Got a motion to approve. And a second?
Second.
You were beaten by the second down here, Art, sorry.
That's all right.
All right. Is there any further discussion? In that case, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed say nay. The motion passes unanimously. All right. The next item on the agenda, I think y'all, that was a very nice presentation, by the way. Next item on the agenda is ZC 1708. This is another rezoning from R2. The request is to rezone at B4, and this is on Highway 181.
Lee, can you give one second? We're trying to take out the presentation.
Oh, sure.
Presentation, sorry.
Give people a few minutes to move out, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting on them, explain to me in your last meeting what was requested of staff in terms of, of beginning to address the Greeno Road and Highway 181 issue?
That was not in a, in the meeting, but in discussions that Wayne and I had were, you know, rather than to keep putting off and requiring PUDs where you get the guarantees of the, you know, the green space and trying to get the buildings, you know, facing Greeno rather than seeing parking in the back ends of buildings and dumpsters out on Greeno and, you know, big signs to actually come up with those, you know, a few of those items that, you know, we're looking for in the PUDs, and just put them in a requirement for Greeno Road and for 181. That when they're developed, you know, here are the requirements. That way, you don't have a PUD that's just really kind of, where you're really looking for form, that you get a couple of form-based ideas, you know, in your, I, I guess that would be, you know, your B2 zoning overlay for that.
Greeno's been a train wreck for 50 years.
Sure.
It's just, and I mean, it's been needed, and obviously, the, the frustration of a lot of property owners on Greeno is, it's time.
Absolutely.
I mean, it really is, it's time.
It has been. And we've had a few in the past, we've had a few plans that we've had for Greeno Road that have just not been acted on by the city council. Just not looked at, not brought up. Just, you know, we had one pretty nice overlay that we did about 10 years ago, and it just got buried somewhere. So, you'll find no disagreement. And I'm glad that it looks like at this time, Wayne will be able to make some significant changes to, you know, what we're looking at from a form base. And we can, you know, move on, and maybe Greeno won't be quite so difficult to deal with in the future.
Yeah, I've got a cattle prod if he doesn't move.
Are we ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the next item on our agenda. It's case number ZC 1708. It's located at 2040 State Highway 181. The property sits at the corner of Windmill Road and State Highway 181. It's about 1.3 acres. The current zoning is R2 residential. The requested zoning is B4. B4 is kind of a professional office category for this. The location of the property, it sits kind of between the Walmart and 27 Grill. There are other, there are law offices and some other dental offices in this area. And it's bordered on the, on all sides, on the north side and the east and west side by R2. On the south side, it's bordered by unzoned District 17 in the county. Staff has looked at this. We have provided the staff report for you. We do recommend rezoning of this property. It's currently occupied with a home, home there. And so, again, staff does recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak on behalf of the developer? I don't see Todd or Matt out there.
I'm here for him, but-
Oh. Okay, you're here to answer questions, though. All right, good deal, good deal. I put my glasses on before I look around first. Oh, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anybody from the audience wish to speak to this item? Mike, okay.
I was just hearing Mr. Dias mention, Greeno's been a train wreck for 20 years. Well, here's the next train wreck, 181. And are we learning anything from what we did on Greeno? So, that's my question.
That's why we discussed to have these overlay items work on 181 as well.
That's exactly right. I think there's a lot of similarity between Greeno and 181. And as Lee mentioned, we did discuss that, and we will be looking at that as well. I think a lot of things that you do on Greeno Road will also be applicable to 181.
Well, excuse me, Wayne, but you know, once they finally start to move, the highway department has a tendency to move fairly quickly. They get it to 104. If we could get ahead of that, we'll be light years ahead of the, of the problems that we'll be facing down the road.
Yeah, I think 181's a little bit different because we do have some areas that are in and out of the, out of the city. And so, but we can still, I believe, make a meaningful impact as far as trying to provide some guidance out there on, on Greeno.
You know, along, along that same line, will you be in, in those instances on 181 where the county, where the county has got properties? Would we be coordinating with them in an attempt to, to make some, some sense out of the future development on 181?
Well, if it's unzoned, there, there's very little coordination we, we do with that. It's unzoned, so there's no land use control that's exhibited there. We do have some things like MOP approvals that will still apply in the planning jurisdiction, which this is in. And near this area, this would be in, so we would still have that. But as far as, you know, any kind of-
We saw subdivision rigs, you could look at.
We do. We do.
Possibly.
But as far as individual zoning of lots, that's not something that we have.
All right, well, going once, going twice as far as the public hearing. Nobody wishes to speak to this. In that case, I will close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. And we do have someone here, commissioners, on behalf of the developer, if you have questions, or if you have questions to the staff.
I have a question. What type of office building is it going to be?
We don't have, I don't think we have, they've not told us any definite plans for the property. There's no site plan accompanying this. I will mention that similar to the Green property, there will be a buffer that's required. If this is rezoned, there is a 20-foot buffer that's required between this and the adjoining property that's residential. So you will have a landscape buffer that will be applied there.
What will be?
If and when it's.
What will happen to the existing home?
I'm assuming they could use it for an office, or they could remove it and build an office in its place. It'd be up to the property owner.
I just remember when this was presented to us to be a nail salon. I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, I'm not.
So I'm just asking.
I'm not sure of the nail salon.
Do y'all have any plans on this property at this point as far as any future tenants? Or is this just?
Want to understand that or not?
And again, for the audience, basically, we would just, in this case, make a recommendation to the city council to make the final decision. And if this is rezoned B4, this is not like any kind of a subdivision deal. I mean, it's B4 from here on out. If the B4 regulations change, then the regulations on that property change if they don't develop anytime soon. But whenever they choose to develop, whatever the B4 regulations are at that time is what they would then live with.
Or if there's an overlay, they would have to comply with that as well.
Or overlay. And a B4, by the way, is a little bit lighter use than the last one we saw, the B2 or B4 is primarily office usage. Any further questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move ahead.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the next item on the agenda is SD 719, the public hearing to request of SD Civil Engineering for applied approval of Van Antwerp Park subdivision, a two-lot replat.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you if we want to make the announcement now regarding SD 17 dot 16 and 17, if that would be appropriate?
SD 16, and I probably should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting, SD 16 and 17 have been pulled from the agenda tonight by request of the developer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So we'll proceed with SD 17 dot 19. It is derived from 17 and 16. And just a brief overview before we proceed, those two requests were for respective four lot minor subdivisions that encompass the Van Antwerp Park project. Included in each of those requests was a replat. And after examining it and upon legal advisement, staff has prepared a separate item to consider the replat separately. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Ken Watson. He'll explain the legal implication, why we have a separate agenda item to consider the replat. But in summary, staff's recommendation for the item is denial. It's based upon the understanding that the site is one lot in existence at this time, and I'll ask Mr. Watson to elaborate. He'll give the legal backing for this recommendation.
Okay, we're going to let Mac Walcott come up first, the developer.
Yes, sir.
Whatever questions he has.
Yes, sir.
Ken can address those at the same time as he addresses.
I'd like to do is, we had a slide we sent, Emily, can you put that up? No, Angela sent you up, okay. In, we got a bunch of stuff from the planning commission staff at 4 o'clock Friday afternoon. And I've read it a bunch of times, and I'm still trying to understand exactly what it means. So we're asking a few questions of you guys before we decide whether to hear the SD 17 19 tonight. So if you could, if I could ask those questions, I may decide to ask that to be reconsidered later. In the staff report, it is a little bit confusing. It says, "Upon advice of legal counsel," and it also references a lot, it's very confusing to me, and I'm a layman. If there's a, if y'all have read this report and it says, "Upon advice of legal counsel," what is y'all's opinion about voting in contrary to that? Are y'all willing to hear something that your lawyers already told you not to hear?
I can't answer for everybody else, but as a normal board member who gets paid zero, if we follow the legal counsel that we have, we're protected by the City of Fairhope under their blanket of insurance and immunity. Or if we go out on our own contrary to legal advice, then there are certain cases we could be left out on our own.
Well, that's sort of my question, because by bearing the legal advice in here, I don't know if it gives us a chance to have a hearing in front of you, because really, y'all may already have said the ruling's been done, and we just, we can't not affirm what. I think there's a fundamental issue here about how property is conveyed in Fairhope, and I'm trying to decide, can we hear it tonight in an open manner? Or is the legal opinion already prejudiced y'all's ability to hear it? And that's, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm confused, because I read it and I thought, well, if it says a legal opinion this, then why are y'all here? I mean, because it's a pretty important case about how we recognize lots in Fairhope. And if y'all are, the reason I'm asking the question is if you're not comfortable hearing it, if the lawyer has said, "Don't hear it," then we'll withdraw it and we'll address this another way. But it's, we're pretty clear that we own two lots up there, but there's this buried in the staff report that I don't know who will ever see is an opinion, and I don't know how to get a fair hearing on that.
I think probably listen to what our attorney says, and if you can work it out between now and the next meeting, where he feels differently, I'm glad to put it back on the top of the agenda. You know, listen to it at that point. But I can't speak for the rest of the commissioners, but it would certainly prejudice me.
Okay. Well, I mean, I don't, I respect that. I just, as a process, if the staff lawyer puts that in there on any issue, then how can y'all function as a board? That's a question I have.
Well, maybe we can function as a board, but certainly it has a bearing on.
Oh, I agree. And the question I'm asking is, my reading of it is, and I've read it a bunch, it's a partial description of an important legal position. And I thought, wow, but it's going to go dark now because the lawyer said it's our legal position. So I'd like to really, I'll withdraw it, and let's hear it, because it's an important issue, and maybe we can hear it without the staff having rendered a legal opinion. That's what I'd like to do next month, and maybe y'all can, y'all are plenty knowledgeable about real estate law. This is a fundamental real estate law issue. Danny would take you through it case by case. Our position may be different than your position, but maybe that's why y'all are here. So I'd like to withdraw it, if that's okay then.
That'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
What are you withdrawing? All of it? Or the 16 and 7?
Those were from, this was the question of the replat.
Okay.
So just Mac, you're withdrawing 19 for the next month, okay?
Okay.
At that point, Ken, do you feel like you want to make any comments at this time based on that, or do you want to just?
Advice that the commission should hear these applications was made at the time they had all three pending, stacking the two miners on top of the replat. And that would walk the moratorium replat. And they told the two miners, they could proceed to hear a replat and not be substituting the moratorium, they would address it on its merits, and then we would discuss the issue. And I would have the advice that you got on the replat itself in the report. And what Matt's saying is, we just don't want to have that conversation at this point.
Well, it's more the question of, you know, we bought two lots, we're rocking and rolling, and the planning commission lawyer believes they're not two lots for planning commission purposes, and that we're just, we want to understand that bedrock issue, forget the replat. I'm just shocked that there's.
Well, here's the long and the short of it. You know, we can go through it, I think most of the people like the subdivision. I understand that. But the problem is, and I don't blame you, and Wayne and I were both talking today about how much, you know, we hate moratoriums, because you know what's going to happen November? We're going to have 5,000 items, and it's meatball surgery, and then people try to come in instead of with the regular subdivision like you should be allowed to come in with. You've got to come in and play lawyer ball, say this is two lots, is it two lots, is it not? I don't know. You know, but normally, if this were an item, you know, that we didn't have just a short time to get past this moratorium, and legal, and you disagreed with legal, you would just present it, and if we denied it, then you would have your day in court. And at that point, you know, the judge would say that he agrees with your attorneys or our attorney or what have you. But in this case, you know, with this being a subdivision that nobody wants to vote down and deny and get the clock rolling, you know, that you've got to wait X number of months to re-present it.
Do I have one of my questions?
And restart the fees and the money and all of that again. You know, the advice is, why not just, you know.
This question of whether it's one lot or two nots, that's really, that's really an important issue to us, because the staff attorney has one view of how a lot should be recognized, and obviously, we have another view. If we're successful on that, or if we're denied, is there any timeframe about when we could hear that again?
Right, but it would be a recent mission, right?
It would be a recent mission.
It would be a recent mission.
But there's not a six-month window or anything? Yeah, okay. Well.
So the only thing is, you just have to re-submit and go through the cost again if it were.
Matt, let me ask you something. I think I understand, I see what you're trying to do. Whether I agree with it or not is immaterial at this point. But with, and I learned about the moratorium more today in a conversation with Wayne than what I already knew. But was the moratorium to be over, what is it, in October, October 2nd? Is there a reason that you wouldn't take this as a major subdivision?
We'll probably, ultimately, we've heard the will of the planning commission about two miners, you know, we're doing that, we're listening, we're listening. On the way to doing that, there's been a question raised about the integrity of the two lots we own. And as I said today, I don't know if I own one lot or two lots. And there's a partial opinion that is in this report that we're ready to deal with. You deal with it all day long with meets and bounds transfers. We heard tonight, two other, one other, the Greens' property was transferred by meets and bounds, and so is able to be considered by planning and zoning. I'm reading in ours that the way ours was transferred keeps ours from being considered by you. That was the bombshell we got two weeks ago, that the way the property was transferred would make it not be eligible to be heard as two lots. And I'm still struggling with that, because I don't, Ken Heard, Danny Calhoun, Brian Britt, Judge Norton, all identified as two lots, but buried in this opinion is some position that it's a single lot.
Were there two pin numbers?
Yes, sir, there are two pin numbers today.
Were there two before it was transferred?
No, there are two parcels transferred by meets and bounds. I mean, Danny can speak to that. If y'all want to hear it, I mean, y'all are able to understand property as well as anybody. I mean.
What's that?
Yeah, and what I would ask is, is the replat, the two lot issue was part of a replat request? If I could just ask for clarification about whether y'all think it's two lots or not? That's the one I don't get. And I think if y'all hear Danny's.
Our attorney's telling us it's not, and I'm going to defer to him.
Okay, well, that's my question, is do we even bother putting it on if the attorney's saying it's one lot?
He's going on the record to withdraw it, though.
Seems to me you ought to have the two attorneys get to go and figure it out.
That's what I would like to see.
Been trying to, yeah, okay. So we'll withdraw, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Ken, I don't know who's, you know, who needs to request that you get together with their attorneys, but if you could talk with them and maybe see if there's some mutual ground or explain to them your reasoning on that would be good. Okay, I think that's reasonable. That way, just get all the cards out on the table and make a decision. All right, thank you, Ken. All right, the next item on the agenda is the two lot minor subdivision.
I have some clarification. When does he come back? When should we expect us back on our agenda?
I thought we were saying before the meeting that, assuming that the next meeting?
Yeah, it's fine. If you can talk with him before the next meeting, and then let us know if y'all come to some mutual agreement. Be fantastic. Be nice to get as much as we can. I mean, Matt, we'd love to get this done before the moratorium, because if you think this is a long meet, then wait until November.
Wait till, just, let me just make one comment. When you said, "Wait till the moratorium's over in July," I said, okay. Then you said, "Wait till it's over in October." It's a challenging question about how to put property in service under the law. I understand what y'all are under, but I'm curious how we're getting out of this moratorium.
Well, there's a city councilman right there who's, I'm glad, not to put you on the spot, but I'm glad you're here, because I, everybody I've talked to, all the city council people I've talked to say, October's it. So then Jimmy Conyers is not here today. This was his last week, but he's out of town, and he concurred with that as well. So we'll hold their feet to that fire, Matt. Next item, SD 718, a two lot minor subdivision on Kirkman Lane.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And as stated, we have a two lot minor subdivision. This is at the intersection, this is at the intersection of Kirkman Lane and Summit Street. Will create two lots, approximately 0.31 acres each. Mr. Chairman, the recommendation is for approval, the application is in order. I'll call to the chair and the commission's attention, there are some, they recommend approval, there are some conditional approvals, and these are basically some typos that were found after we put together the agenda on the preliminary plat. One, the BMP plan requirement. To be consistent, we have required that all of our plats BMP plan prior to issuance of the building permit and shall be recorded, should be placed on the plat to be recorded. Also, Mr. Chairman, the individual certificate blocks for water, sewer, and power and natural gas, rather than one collective utility certificate block, we prefer one for each type of utility. Again, a minor edit to the plat. Letters of availability for file purposes, and then the fire flow model. And, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, the engineering firm Sawgrass, they communicated with staff and made it aware of scheduling difficulties and trying to get the fire flow model done. The actual fire flow model was completed this morning, so it'll be conditional approval based upon receipt and review of that by the water sewer department. And Mr. Quentin Middleton with Sawgrass Engineering, he's here to answer any questions from the chair of the commission.
Great, thank you so much. If you'd like, let me go ahead, since it doesn't look like anybody is here for this anyway, let me go ahead and open the public hearing and see if anybody wants to speak, and then we'll call the developer up and answer everything else. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, yes, sir. And if you don't mind, state your name and your address, please, for our records.
I'm Mike Gordon, I own the property at 365 Summit. My only question is, is what size is the property going to be? I couldn't hear what they said with the noise, but the measurements of the lot and what street does it front? Sorry, I just couldn't hear you.
So, Mr. Chairman, answer that question. It creates 2.31 acre lots, and all of the lots are fronting on Summit due to their lot configuration.
Two lots, 3.1 acres.
I'm sorry, 0.31 acres each.
Two lots, 0.31. Two lots, .31 acres.
Each lot is almost a perfect square in configuration.
And they're both fronting on Summit?
No, one on Kirkman, one on Summit.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
I didn't think you could do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, to answer my question.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. We have someone here from Sawgrass, if you have any questions. There's currently a house on this, isn't it?
No, it's been removed.
The house has been removed?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, that house has been removed, and the, the remnant location of the lot has been grassed, but that house has been demoed.
When was the house demoed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, looking at the site, it was in the last couple of months, because when, when staff examined the site, it had been just freshly seeded, so not, not in the too distant past.
So, was there one I went, I went by early?
Like, June of July.
On this letter from this gentleman, it was appended to the application, he indicates there's drainage problems on the area?
Yes, sir, Dr. Thayer, and, you know, our response for that, I think a standard response there will be is that obviously a BMP plan will be required for construction purposes when the house is constructed. And then I'll defer back to, and I'll ask additional staff to step in and back me up if necessary. But I'll defer there to the actual setback requirements, because what you'll have in this case is that by subdividing, you'll end up with two smaller lots, applying the setbacks to each one, and then, and then applying the, the percentage of construction restriction. So, you know, it's plausible that you could actually have less impervious space by having two lots subdivided. The other items, the other items probably would be more of a public works issue, which we, when we as staff look at building permits and assist the building department when they come in, and, you know, certainly any citizen that requests assistance will be happy to work with them to illuminate any issues to public works.
Subtraction by addition. Any, any more questions from the commissioners?
I, I have a couple, actually. I know this area really well, and I've seen the water run down Kirkman into, to Liberty. And that is an issue, the road condition right there is an issue, because it's not really a road. It's a, it's actually only one vehicle can go on it at a time, if you've ever driven on it. You can't pass another car on it. It's more of a lane, which, it's called Kirkman Lane. You know, not knowing the square footage of the homes and the runoff on that is concerning to me. As well as, uh, city vehicles getting on the, on that road, and what they're gonna have to do to put in. I know that the, the garbage truck runs off the road as of right now.
Um, we can also-
Offset?
To putting a BMP requirement at the time of building permit, we can also require that at drainage. We typically will do that for a minor subdivision.
Okay.
Write a note on the plat, so you could make it conditional upon a note being placed on the plat, the drainage will be addressed at the time of building permit. So, that may-
Yes, thank you, Nancy. Like I said, I appreciate staff jumping in to back me up as we make the presentations.
And so when the city maintains that road, will they be widening that lane at all for?
I don't think that-
The city already maintains that, it's already a city round line.
Yeah. Well, so since there's just one house fronting on it, it's not changing the amount of traffic theoretically on that road, since the other fronts on Summit.
Mm-hmm.
What, with the drainage requirement, what, what will that requirement, I mean, I was, I was-
Eric will just look at it from a drainage standpoint, so if he saw any serious concerns, they would address it at that time.
With adverse effects to neighbors. I was trying to do the math, and it, I mean, if, if nothing else, but just the side, the interior side setback, it does seem like you're, you'll be allowed to build less impervious area with two rather than one, depending on the parking. So, you never know what somebody's gonna actually do.
Depending on the size that one person wants to do, and how much parking they want, and how much drive they want.
How much house they want, yeah.
You know, we, we, this meets the subdivision regs, so I don't see where legally we can approve it. You know, we have any right not to, since it meets the subdivision regs. But I've always gotten concerned about, you know, infill, which we always, you know, at conferences, you talk about how infill is great, but then when, you know, lots get chopped smarter, smaller and smaller, and you've got more rooftops and fewer-
That's exactly right.
Less grass in these areas, and then they blame it from the, you know, the-
Yeah.
Poor drainage from uphill people, it's kind of interesting.
That's right.
Well, it's the balance between maybe acute, more, more density, more impervious area in a small area versus allowing that sprawl and having a greater stormwater issue over-
Correct.
A larger, much larger area.
Correct. We all know where this water goes.
I'm gonna have to ask an embarrassing question, I mean, how, how are they gonna get sewer to the, for the slot one?
Kirkman?
Matt, I, I'll just continue my little discussion about this. I think a 20-foot right away is pretty narrative front a lot on, and I know the lots on the rest of the block go the other direction. And, and the drainage and utilities been in the back, is that where the drainage actually goes? Or, I mean, and I apologize, because I already know this.
Into the other person's yard.
For, uh, that's the standard requirement that we have in our subregs to place, to show it on the plat. And you see, the writing is very solid, very small, I apologize if I can't read. It looks like the sanitary sewer runs in the center of the street, and actually turns and makes the corner up Summit. Right.
Yeah, and I see the sewer on Summit, and I see the sewer turning the corner on Kirkman going the other way of the lots. Is there a sewer line on Kirkman in front of those lots too, then?
There is, there's existing home right across the street, it's actually on the west side, so that one has service. So, Richard, I'll defer to you, if you can actually run, if there's ability to run a lateral to connect them. My review, I assume so.
Just to be sure, we can call operations director in the morning and talk to him about it.
Can that be, can that be one of the? Call the director of operations and see what he says. I'm sorry, I am sorry, I just, I just hadn't paid any attention to it, I didn't make the meeting the other day that was-
Propose an outhouse on that one?
Yeah, I don't know, you sure that I don't have a safety thing? The house across the street?
It's not raised, but that doesn't mean anything.
Yeah, anyway. I do have a little bit of a passion for all these people subdividing two lots and building bigger buildings, and the drainage is already a problem, and I can't tell you how many people I've talked to about drainage and, you know. I don't know where the gentleman went, there's in the middle over there, but, you know, eventually you gotta decide, you take, you know, draw a line in the sand about it. But you, did you mention, Nancy, that we would be able to dictate some drainage restrictions in there?
But, the way we've handled minor subdivisions in the past, we'll write a note on the plat, that you'll get BMP plan and drainage at the time of building permit. That way, if there are issues, Eric can address them.
Right, would, the drainage plan being something that would be an LID feature to the lot that would absorb some of that stormwater?
Well, if they had probably serious concerns with the lot, I'm sure that, that Eric could work it, work out how they were going to address the drainage. But it's not a dictated, thou shalt-
So they're not required to do any detention, so to speak?
No.
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 They're not. Absolutely not.
So, so what would constitute a concern?
If they're an area with large lots, there are no sidewalks required, there's no green space required, it just, but there's not. Unless, until we change some kind of a regulation, I don't see anything we can do about it.
So, so what- Go to dig and push it on somebody else, they have to take care of it.
And then they call me and ask, wow, that person got to build such a big house and it's flooding them.
Well, that was kind of, what, what teeth do, do our conditions have? You know, what do we use to determine adverse effect on, on neighbors? They call Eric after?
And whether the regulations are deficient or not, I mean, according to the process and the subdivision regulations, if you meet those regulations, we can do some things, you know, to address that issue, I guess. But as far as requiring detention, retention, those kind of things, I think it says for the minor subdivisions in our ordinance that that's not required. From a staff perspective, we can't make them comply with something that's not in our ordinance. We try very diligent, and when we give comments, we cite the sections of the ordinance that they're violating. In this particular case, I believe if they meet all the requirements, whether we lack or not, whether there's deficiencies or not in our ordinance, I think we're almost compelled, and that's a really more legal issue, I guess, we're compelled to, to grant the approval based on the existing ordinances we have in place right now.
But usually if Eric sees they have a problem or something like that, they'll recommend an engineer get involved, or somebody to take a look at it.
That's exactly, I think, in the, in the building process, now we've gone away from the, the subdivision process, now we're into the building process. If, if Eric sees a concern, I think he has the authority under the building code and the building process to then start, you know, doing some things on site, but I, I don't think it'd go to the point of having retention, detention, this would go, wouldn't be to that scale. It'd be more of a localized issue addressing any kind of damage to, potential damage to neighboring properties.
Like putting a pipe on somebody's back, I mean, if, if the water's going out to the road and going down the hill, he's not requiring water retention, it's just if the water's gonna go through, you know, momma's zelus in the back, then they might try to figure out some way to reroute the water. But it's not anything to do with, you know, no more water can come off after this than before this in a hundred-year storm like we require of regular subdivisions.
A good example of that is actually on Liberty Street, two houses north of the adjacent lot. Retention was put in and a drainage structure built because of flooding. Probably three to five years ago.
Okay, and I may be speaking out of-
And that was at the time of building permit.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I agree with the subdivision, I'm maybe speaking out of turn just to understand the teeth we have with the conditional approval for other minor subdivisions that have stormwater issues, and it's coming up frequently.
Well, one thing that I like about doing a, you know, the planning processes with things like the change in the subdivision regs and the comprehensive plan, is it, it can be a real team-building event, as well as, you know, people learning and discussing what's going on, what deficiencies do we have in Fairhope, what changes do we want to make? And then you make those changes, and then, you know, we're all educated in the process of, you know, here are some areas we've had some issues, and maybe here are some things we can do to correct those issues. And that's one of the reasons that, you know, regardless of what, you know, one gentleman said, I think, you know, just going through the process of the comprehensive plan, regardless of what you come up with, is a, is a good educational and team-building event, because it brings up so much of what you've been dealing with the last few years. But we are far, far afield off of the subject now. We've got a two lot minor subdivision, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve? Yeah, I'll move it.
I've got motion, and Dr. Thayer with the second. Any further discussion?
There were several conditions that were recommended in that, you staff were-
Want to make your motion with the, with the conditions?
Do you want to include your recommendations about sewer checking in with the sewer line?
Well, certainly.
Can we add that?
Yeah, I mean, we don't want them to pay $600, they expect us to run 500 feet to get sewer to them, if that's what you're asking. Yeah, they need to provide sewer if they're subdividing the primary.
I'm sorry, I was explaining to Holly-
I didn't know that that was like your job.
Explaining the joke from a few minutes ago to Holly.
All right, so I have six conditions before that are listed, as well as, although one of them kind of is sort of spindibility of sewer, but also including drainage at the time of building permit.
And, Mr. Chairman, for, for simplicity's sake, it may be easier for it, for the condition to be, the very first condition, the BMP plan, BMP and drainage plan. Requirement prior to issuance of building permit shall be noted on the plat prior to recording. That may simplify it for everyone.
Is that all right? Is that all right with your second, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposing say nay.
No, oh, no, sorry.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
That wasn't the best thing to do, adjourn. Last item on the agenda, IR 1703. This is a requet, from a request of Jason Schmidt for an informal review to rezone property located on the south side of Nichols, just east of Professional Park Drive from M1 Light Industrial to A pud. Is anybody here on behalf of the developer?
I don't think anybody's here for this one.
In that case, all except, do we have any old or new business?
No, sir.
Oh, I'd like to say something, I'd like to say how much I enjoyed, you know, learning from George Roberts and his time on our planning committee, and what, and many years that he put on, volunteered his time, I'd like to thank him for that.
Very good point, very good point.
And I'd like to welcome any member.
Uh, do you want these, us to leave these?
Do we have all business?
Yes.
Okay. I would suggest that you keep those for next month, so Matt won't have to reprint those again. If you keep them and bring them next month and refer those, and let, let me change them, that's a-
Do I need to take those back?
I suggest you just keep them.
I still got more stuff from, from the county that I don't trust.
It's where the world of planning commission is, you don't take them back again.
Take them back, and that way if there are any minor changes that need to be done, they could do that, all right? Do I have a motion to adjourn, is that what?
Yeah, it's all business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Before we do that?
We have to turn this back on?
Yes.
We'll give them back to you.
Before we do that, I'd like to address something with the planning commission in terms of the, the standards that we use for utilities. And I've talked to Ken about this a little bit. And what we have right now, we have-
I know, but I-
For lift stations. We, we currently have standards for lift stations that require suction lift pumps, which, which require a, a feature on top of the ground that would be basically a house, and it becomes a little more expensive for developers. We have a, a provision for submersible pumps, and that would be assuming you can't use the suction lift pump. And I'm talking to some of our operators, the ones that maintain the lift stations, they prefer the submersible pump type just as much. They're less maintenance than, than the suction lift pumps are that have motors and pulleys on. But we also have sole source requirements, and then what I want to do is make a, a recommendation to allow pre-approved equipment, as approved by the wastewater department superintendent or director of operations, as a provision in allowing us to be able to look at alternate equipment that seems to make more competition among the, the manufacturers, and, and seems to be more in line with what other utilities in the area do.
Richard, will those changes be to the specs, or we're not actually amending the, the-
The standards.
Subdivision rules, but the standards we have, the specs we have.
Yes, correct.
So, there's a separate document that, that they go by that's referencing the subdivision regulations, the specifications, I think, that's what we're looking at.
And I think what Ken has stated is that the, that the, the standards are approved, or are they, uh, what would be the other? Well, I wasn't gonna say it either, but, but I happen to have a couple of people that are chomping at the bit to know what they can do. Correct. That's, that's- That's correct. Correct, and, and, and that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Do we need something writing to approve?
Yes, and we need to wait until the next meeting so that we can get something writing and the county can review.
Yeah, well, the writing is, it will say, or as pre-approved, often it's approved by the superintendent of water and wastewater or the-
Can we add that to our agenda for next?
We can, if it's, pleases the planning commission, we can add to the agenda and talk to the operations director and get that in writing, and write at the specs, and put it on the agenda.
On, on that-
Well, I need something else to do.
On that, based on kind of what we were speaking of today regarding, you know, Greeno Road and overlay and where we're going, that's gonna keep coming up, what can we do to start implementing a consistent plan?
Well, you know, as far as Greeno Road goes, this is what Lena spoke about today.
181, you know, what we were discussing.
There's several things, when you talk about strip commercial, you think about the, the big shopping centers where all the parks and the- where all the parking's in the front, you've got to see a parking with a building way in a distance. And I think the, what we want to do is sort of reverse that model. Again, we're limited on size, so we won't have these, because the current ordinance only allows 8,000 square feet of footprint. Bring that closer to the road, frame the road, with the buildings have majority of the parking in the back and on the side. I think that alone can make some dramatic differences in the appearance of any new commercial development on Green Road. Also, cross-access requirements between properties, so you don't have a lot of, you know, driveway cuts coming on to Green Road, which causes traffic delays, those kind of things. And have a lot more rear access, I guess, going to the buildings. Sinage requirements can be evaluated, landscaping can be evaluated. Landscaping to the point that you're not blocking the buildings visually, you can still see it, because a lot of times, these buildings are what really frames the road, and you can, just really beautiful buildings that really is an asset. So, those are a few things that we're talking about doing just initially, that will definitely, you know, I think, help with that issue long-term, and also limiting some of the uses, objectionable uses that we have. At the last meeting, we had a bank want to do a drive-through, and drive-throughs are, you know, they're difficult, especially with banks, because on the one last month, we had a business, a bank next to residential with an ATM machine, which 24/7, usually ATM machines, those kind of things. So, drive-throughs have to be paid particularly close attention to. If you have a McDonald's drive-through, somebody's ordering Big Macs at midnight, and if you live next to that, you don't want to deal with that. So, there's a lot of things we can do from, what the uses that you could limit on Green Road, to find those that are much more compatible with, with a corridor like Greeno's. There's a lot of things we can do, and we'll bring some of those ideas to the next meeting to evaluate and consider. But, that's a start, I guess.
So, you can, you can get a list of things that we can evaluate, and then we'll discuss it and vote it in, and say, let's implement this into the comprehensive plan?
Well, to the ordinance, the ordinance, yeah. So, then it, then it has the legal requirements that would go along with that. So, that's kind of what we're kind of thinking right now, that, that's some of the initial steps we can make. I think long-term, with maybe some, adding some additional meat to the comprehensive plan would be helpful as well, as far as when you start getting into what intensities of uses, what density of uses. I think one of the things that we need to look at is our utilities and our infrastructure from the standpoint of water, sewer, transportation, and how that dictates what intensity of land use that you have. And that can be done through a future land, future land use planning process. And so, you can have future land use categories, low density, medium density, high density, and you have the corresponding zoning districts that fit within those categories. And if you have a rezoning that's from R1 to R4, for example, and it's within medium density, it's pretty much, you know, it meets the comprehensive plan, and it's served by the adequate utilities we have, and so forth. And that's a way you can start kind of really guiding also some of the village development, where you have some of the cascading densities away from the village centers, and having the more intense uses at the village center. I think that's, that's some meaningful ways, I think, we can, we can move forward. And that's the long-term planning process, which we wouldn't, couldn't do overnight, because when you look at the land and its compatibility, you're looking at water, sewer, environmental features, wetlands, gullies, those kind of things, even soils, to some extent, you would look at for, as far as can it handle the intensity or density of use. And then, also, you're looking at the infrastructure as a roadway capacity there for high-intensity uses, and then also, down to the compatibility with the adjoining current uses there. So, it's a, it's a very, more of a long-term process that you look at, and it takes a lot of data and a lot of time to put those together, but I think those are all worthwhile endeavors for us to look at. And that kind of sets the stage from a practical standpoint on a case-by-case basis. So, when we do bring rezonings, it would be analyzed against that. Then, also, if you wanted to have a community design element to the comprehensive plan, you could have that, where you're providing some design guidance as well, not just what density and intensity. Then you start, go, once you, once you meet that, then you start going into the design aspect. And again, design would be very, very limited. We wouldn't go into colors, those kind of things, but we would, there may be some things we want to look at from just some fundamental design issues we want to encourage in certain locations and so forth. So, that's kind of, in a nutshell, what I, how I would, I hope we would proceed with that process.
Good. Thank you.
The lift station next to Van Antwerp, Richard and I talked a little bit, y'all have one south of town next to the, next to the city barn, that's got a big fence around it. So, I called Richard and I said, who, did the city do that, or did the developer do that? So, I would think it'd be good if y'all, if y'all come up with some standards about how the city screens its own lift stations, and the, you know, I talked about the sound of the emergency generator on the, I was up there at noon one day, and said, what the heck is that? Cuts on for about 30 minutes each day, and then the odor issue. So, those, those would be good things for the city to do, as well as for the developer, because I don't know how many of those y'all have. Y'all have eight or, eight or 10 of them like that?
With emergency generators?
No, big lift stations around town like the one at Van Antwerp.
64 around town.
Yeah, so they all, they all probably have the same issues, and maybe, maybe if we're asking the developers to do it, let's do it, let the city show how to do it, so that'd be good.
And that's a good point, with subdivisions that require lift stations to have some type of fencing. And I prefer vegetative fencing over, it just seems like fences, whether they're privacy fences or chain-linked, they require maintenance, and at least with a vegetative buffer, you know, you can plant some different...
Yeah, I'm just saying, y'all could, y'all could do it to your own first, and then show the developers how to do it, because...
And you may get some sound deadening from a vegetative buffer, too. I agree, I agree, we ought to have some standard for that. I don't know if it'll make it to next month's meeting, though.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to elect a vice chair, I believe Mr. Roberts was the vice chair.
He was.
So, I believe we need to elect a vice chair.
Okay. Any nominations for a vice chair?
I nominate Holly.
I have a nomination for Holly. Any more nominations?
I nominate Dr. Thayer.
There we go.
Dr. Thayer said he would.
I decline. I have a service-related hearing disability, and if the person's not exactly speaking to the microphone out there, I can't have, I have trouble following them, and I would hate to do that. I nominate Holly, because I think she would do an excellent job.
That's very sweet. I'd have to decline, I just, I can't, I can't follow in those footsteps. I don't know the process as well.
Maybe the question ought to be, which one of y'all wants to do it?
I was gonna nominate you.
I just started, I'm, I've got a learning curve.
You wouldn't take it?
Please. I'll say the form...
Come on, Hollis.
Why are you talking so loud?
Go ahead, you can do it for a while, and then when you want to step down, you can do it for a while, and then when you want to step down, you can step down when you want to.